August 22nd, if we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Great. First, we'll start with public comment.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Marsha Gershenson, one of the county commissioners. So as you may or may not have heard, the Board of Commissioners voted to put a new millage on the ballot in November. And this is, this millage will replace the Smart Village, the Smart Millage, which Bloomfield Township residents are paying 97%. The new millage will be 95%. So our residents will have a slight decrease in the tax that they're paying for increased services. So paratransit, microtransit, new routes will be developed, and this will all be beneficial to the entire county. One thing that many years ago, it was not looked upon favorably that people from the South End could go to the North End. There was actually many, many people that were against cross-county transportation. So now, the entire county will have transit with an emphasis on getting people to their jobs where people, big manufacturing areas, hospitals, educational facilities, and there will be a look at what routes, what the communities want. And I'm really your liaison. So I would like to invite the public that has questions about this millage to contact me, and my information's readily available. The board I know has questions related to Smart, and I can tell you that the four existing taxes right now, which are Smart, WODA, which is Western Oakland County, NOTA, which is Northern Oakland County, and OPC, which is the older person's commission, but actually they provide transit to the Rochester area, their millages will all be replaced. So nobody will be double-dipped. And the services that you're receiving, and all the residents are receiving from those four entities, will be continued. But I don't want you to take my word for it. I am going to set up a meeting for the board or for anybody that has questions with Smart directly because I, from what I'm hearing, those are the issues that some of the board has issues with. My goal is to explain what's going to be on the ballot. And for me, I do believe that transportation has been a big issue in keeping young people in our area. And there shouldn't be an opt-in, opt-out choice for people. That's just my opinion. I'd like to see everybody go wherever they want to go. This is an effort to give seniors more mobility. We're going to be focused on people with disabilities, and there'll be, and also a focus on veterans. So please reach out to me. I am very excited and supportive of this millage, and I look forward to answering any questions you might have.
Thank you.
I know I have some questions. Does anybody else want to ask?
Some questions that would really help because there is a risk of decreased services. As a donor community, some of us do get more than, you're talking about the millage, but the issue is, the only reason we even got Smart to the table to talk about what we needed was the risk of the opt-out. So you've taken away the chance of getting them to the table. For example, we've been wanting bus shelters. People standing in the snow, standing in the rain, for years, they wouldn't talk to us. We threatened to opt-out. All of a sudden, we had meetings. They have only been paying $25,000 for our transportation person here from 25 years ago. No increases. The only reason they started talking to us about an increase because we pay for that subsidy now is the opt-out. So the issue is, we do have risk of reduced services, and we also have the risk of no longer having them come to the table. So how do we handle that for those of us that are unsure about this millage?
Sure, I totally understand that. And I have sent your questions to Smart, so I'm
They haven't replied.
Oh, they reply to me all the time, Danny. I don't have, they reply to me because I'm the liaison. And I'll get you the answers. I'm going to set up a meeting. But from the best of my knowledge, no services that you have now will be interrupted, including any earmarks or special assessments that you have. But I want you to hear that directly from them. And certainly, this issue about having shelters is a powerful one, and that is one that if, if you've had a problem with that, I would hope I could help remedy that situation.
So, so the issue again, although for years, they were ignoring us, and the opt-out being the only reason that they talked to us.
Well, there's a new reason, and that is me. I was never involved in any of those conversations, and I-
Because we didn't know you guys were doing this. To be honest, we were never involved.
Well, the Smart Millage has been up for, it's been, everyone knew the Smart Millage was expiring.
Right. That's why we were talking to them about the Smart Millage. We didn't know about the Oakland County Millage, yeah.
Dave Coulter ran on a platform of bringing transit to Oakland County. This is not a new concept. We have been talking about it for years. We tried a few years ago to get it on the ballot. And one of the big issues, one of the big reasons why it was defeated is because certain communities were being double-dipped. So it was important to the commissioners to be sure that every community that had any service will not, will not be taxed twice. So in answer to any specific Smart questions, I will refer to them. But I'm watching that, and, you know, your questions will be answered for sure.
I guess I would just add, Marsha, we appreciate your involvement. And we have had, I guess, issues having, pardon the pun, but traction with the bus service. So at this point, I really do look forward to your involvement because quite frankly, we have been paying a lot in terms of our millage. And what we're looking for is really to keep even with inflation, but more so, they have provided, they being Smart, have shared with us some of their plans that they're doing with, with pilot programs in our contiguous communities. And we're hopeful that not only will we remain the same, but really improve and work and be the next community that is serviced by the Flex Plan. So hopefully, we'll spend time with you and Smart and work together to make sure that we're getting-
Absolutely, because there is now going to be an oversight body, which there never was before. So all the commissioners that represent the entire county will be going to their communities, asking for their feedback, what is it that you want, and we'll be representing your interests at the table. So you're not going to be directly talking to Smart anymore. And I have to say, I don't deal with Smart very much, so I'm sorry to hear, and I'm surprised to hear that the relationship wasn't as good as it should have been. And had I known, I definitely would have intervened sooner. But it's not only Smart you'll be dealing with. You'll be dealing with a larger authority, and they're just a component of it. So they'll be doing what we direct them to do.
Well, we look, we look forward to your involvement.
Me too.
And we actually have one of the stronger relationships with them, just to give you a heads up of what you're walking into.
Well, and I'm shocked, but I have heard it, and I have repeated that because, you know, we're involved in appointing the board of Smart, so.
Yeah.
I hear ya.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to make a motion for moving?
Do you want to make a comment?
Nope.
Okay. Now, the public comment closed. I'd like to make a motion, Supervisor Walsh, to move item 13, which is consider approval of raffle license, up to item two on the agenda.
Motion by Clerk Brooke.
Support.
Support by Trustee Schostak. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Okay. So item 13 is a raffle license for a 501(c)(3). We have Adam Devlin here with us, Director and Secretary of the Pierce Forever Foundation. They have a, right there is perfect. They have a, I guess, an annual squash tournament, an event at the BAC.
Yes.
And with that is a raffle, and a license is required. I can represent that all the items that have been submitted to the township that are required for a raffle license have been received, and everything is in order. And I would recommend adoption. If you want anything else about the event and the charity, that would be-
Sure.
Great.
This is our first application for any type of gaming thing. So we're looking to you for the local civic organization endorsement, too, for the state, to get the number that we're required to have. This 501(c)(3) is a, set up as a private foundation. It was started primarily by Brandon Movitz, who lost his three-month-year-old son to SIDS a couple of years ago. And he just felt like there wasn't really a support network that existed for him to find help, find comfort, find resources, find what, you know, how do you take care of a three-month-old baby in terms of cremation, finding a casket. So he set this up to answer those questions, have it readily prepared for people, to have resources in place that he can refer people to. And we may be outgrowing our britches because Beaumont's come to us and wants to partner with us. And now we're trying to figure out if the three of us, who are essentially the board and the directors and all the officers, can now expand this. I'm their attorney. I'm really just holding the third seat warm for Brandon's wife, who's not yet ready to be active in the organization. But I think last year, without a gaming license, just by straight donations, I think we raised $10,000. So we're looking to do more.
Wonderful.
It was supposed to be a little bit bigger, but we had to scale it down.
Great, great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Great cause, and nice to see you.
Yeah.
And make a motion.
Motion by Trustee Burnett.
Support.
Support by Trustee Faqui. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Thank you.
Good luck with your event.
Good luck.
Good evening.
Next, we go to approving the board minutes of August 8th. We've all had a chance to look them over. Unless there's any changes, I'd look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Trustee Murray, support by Trustee Schostak. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Next is to consider the award of the contract for the Spongy Moth Tree Survey. Request for proposals. We have Olivia.
Hello. I do not have a presentation.
Thanks. Oh, you broke her.
So on October 25th, 2021, there's an error in my memo. The Board of Trustees elected to cancel our contract with National Gypsy Moth Management Group, who had been the contractor managing our gypsy moth program since the early 1990s. And part of that decision was based on Oakland County allocating funds for a program. And I'll just really clarify, the, it used to be called Gypsy Moth. It's now renamed Spongy Moth. So there's references to both, but it is now referred to as Spongy Moth. That program developed by the county is for treatment. Bloomfield Township was able to receive funding for treatment. It was about $1,000, just over $1,000. It was a 50-50 match required. And the township's treatment is ground-based spraying. So it's the same product used when there's aerial spraying from airplanes, but with ground-based spraying, it's spraying an individual tree from a truck mounted on the ground. It's still the same product, and the selected trees are based on, in the past, the survey done by our previous consultant in the fall. And so the survey's done on the fall, areas are surveyed by the consultant that we used to contract with, and then a treatment program recommended by them for the spring. So with the cancellation of that contract, in order to develop select areas necessary for treatment in the future, we still need to do a fall survey. And the township does not have in-house resources to perform this work. So with that in mind, the EESD put out a proposal, or request for proposals for this service. And it was an open-ended proposal, since this type of program is not something we've done in-house. So we were looking to look, get responses on how different consultants or contractors would recommend how to proceed with this. So we did take proposals on July 27th, unfortunately. And in line with the times, we only received one proposal for response. However, after reviewing the one proposal internally with multiple people from multiple departments, their proposal does appear to address all of the items that were in the RFP, and also address our request to provide information with a fall survey, and then provide recommendations to the township. And this proposal was just for trees on township-owned properties, or trees in the medians of Woodward and Telegraph, or trees in the right-of-way. So it eliminates trees on private properties, which was included in the past contract as well. So the contractor that submitted a response was the Davie Resource Group. They are, they are associated with Davie Tree Program, who Davie Tree Program was, is, has been the contractor that we've engaged with ground-based spraying in the past. But again, in the past, our consultant that we used to contract would tell us what sites needed spraying based on their survey that they did, and we would just simply relay back to Davie Tree, hey, we need these trees sprayed within this timeframe. So Davie Resource Group that now would provide that survey service for the township. And this is just a one-year request that we did. Just, again, if it's something that, you know, the board wanted to, either it could be an annual contract, or we could go out every year. But this work was just for the survey to perform, this, perform this fall, provide recommendations to the township for treatment activities. Well, first, I'm sorry, select the locations for survey based on past data from our previous consultants and the reports, recommend, develop a survey program, perform the survey, then come back to us with recommended treatment. And then also developing informational brochure for our residents. So that was, that's the scope of the request that we made for proposals. The response from Davie Resource Group was for this services, and the proposal was attached to the memo, is for $19,905. The terms and conditions requested by Davie, by the Davie Resource Group have not been reviewed by the township attorney, but should the board choose to proceed with this, they would be prior to Supervisor Walsh signing. However, we did have conversations with respect to one condition that Davie Resource Group identified in their, their response, and it has to do with the insurance. The township was, we provide in the RFP, the township resolution for insurance requirements. Davie Resource Group responded that they do not provide insurance on a per-project basis. And instead, they provide a total of $5 million commercial general liability, as well as $5 million auto liability. So I reached out to our accounting department, and they reached out to MMRMA, I think. And their response was that if the board, they had no objection to this variance from the insurance due to the timing of their insurance renewal. So basically, they have a policy for $5 million. It's being renewed this September. So it's at the beginning of when this money's available in the bucket. So if there was an issue, that bucket is full versus this being conducted at the end of their one-year period. So that, the response is, is included in the, in the memo as well. So as always, the EESD is recommending proceeding with this project. The suggested motion is move to approve the bid and award the contract for the 2022 Gypsy Moth Tree Survey to Davie Resource Group in the amount of $19,905. And the township EESD shall have the authority to approve up to 10% increase to said contract amount based on conditions discovered in the field. If said conditions are confirmed by the township EESD, and should any additional funding be needed to complete the project, or conditions be discovered in the field, increase the contract cost above 10%. The EESD shall obtain approval by the township supervisor prior to issuing approval of said contract amount. And this scope of work does not include performing treatment. It includes the survey and making the recommendations, as well as the brochure for public information.
Marsha, I'm not always, I'm not always the bad guy, Marsha. We got to thank you for this one.
So, thank you, Olivia, for your presentation. And I want to thank our county commissioner, Gershenson, for helping and really establishing a program with Oakland County to look at gypsy moth as an over, as a county issue, not just as a local issue. And the county, I think last year, Marsha, it was $250,000, and that may, may be the first time that they've-
It was the first time.
-dealt with this.
And it happened a lot because your township board requested it, and so there were two driving communities, and you were one of them. And so the reason that I wanted to stay tonight for this discussion is that we did a survey after our first round, and the, the results that we got back from Bloomfield Township were that you would like more public education, marketing activities, administration, and service costs, which you were approximating at around $2,000. So we are now doing a new resolution. We want to hear from the communities, what is it you want, because we didn't spend half of what we had allocated. There's more money available. Only certain communities are responding. So this would be a time where if there is, if there, if you have any ideas, to put them in writing and to get them to me. Like, I don't know that if you go ahead with this contract, maybe some of those dollars would be reimbursable. And certainly, the survey costs were brought up to me, that maybe that's something that we could really help in. So I would never want to stop you from going ahead with whatever a contract you have, understanding that I'll look into whether or not they can be reimbursed. And, and this committee is meeting in the next two weeks, so I'll have an answer to you. But I would love you to get to me exactly what you think would really help lower your costs, because that was the whole purpose of the grant.
And, and really, you know, it's, it's our costs, and I think all of our neighboring communities. So it's, again, to your credit, it's really a county issue. We're just a function of the greater part. And so hopefully, what we're doing in other communities collectively will get closer to dealing with this as an issue. And, you know, it seems like it's, it's being handled, but I think collectively, we'd be far more effective.
We were surprised at the small response that we got. I think there were only seven communities that participated, because it, like you said, it is a county-wide issue.
I think part of that, I know, we were so happy you were willing to join on this fight, too. I know when Brian reached out to you, you jumped on it right away. We were very happy about that. I know the fellow township supervisors, when we met with the agency that, that was working a lot with this, the biggest issue is the survey cost is the biggest cost. So we, we would love it if that was. And the other was that education. We just don't have-
The education is pretty much a no-brainer.
Yeah.
What is the survey, what's the approximate survey cost, do you know?
$20,000.
Do they break it down?
It's basically what this, what this-
Yeah, this, this-
-plan is for.
It's just a survey, so it's $19,000.
The survey and recommendation, and then informational brochure.
Right.
So the majority is performing the work.
Yeah.
Even the informational brochure, it's the same information. So I mean, even if, even if the county or Michigan State Extension, whomever you have contract, can do that and just supply us that information.
Right.
It's just less than we have to do.
It seems very doable, so I'll look into it from my side. But if you could just send me a written memo on exactly what you think would help, and maybe even the approximate cost, because many communities got over $20,000. So, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have questions for Olivia?
So are we going to wait to approve this until we hear back, or no?
I wouldn't.
You can always submit for reimbursement if they, because it wasn't, it wasn't, it was originally not something that you could apply for.
I do, regarding the schedule, since they do provide a schedule on page nine, and when we released the RFP, we did have dates in there, because the survey does have to be performed during a certain time of the year. And so in order to maximize that time, you know, we wanted to get this RFP out early. I feel like it's late, but I'm always like a three-month-early-type person. So, but their, their scope of, their deliverable is developing the survey program, which includes the locations that we've used in the past, looking at trends, looking at areas in the past that were higher than other areas. So then they can limit the locations that should be focused on. And that would be September, October, and then doing the survey October, November, and then providing the report November, December. And we required the final report in January along with the information. So that's kind of the timeframe, if, if the board wanted to wait. We do, we don't want to miss that window if the board wanted to proceed with performing a survey to begin with. Because each year, we may have, the areas that we treated this year may not be the areas that need treating next year.
I have one question. So now we're just doing township, the survey in the township areas, whereas we had done it everywhere. So in terms of our education to the residents, for them to know what to look for, to try and figure it out, report it, what is their support system, or are they totally on their own to hire someone to come and spray if they think they have, like, an infestation on their property?
Yes. So that was the process, even though the previous contract included trees on private property. If we received a call from a resident that asked, is this spongy moth on my tree, the recommendation was always that they needed to engage the services of a professional company. The contract that we had with National Gypsy Moth Management Group was just for the 500-some plots, or the 500-some locations that were part of the survey. So anything outside of that was totally up to the property owner.
It would kind of fall on, like, for example, we had a moth infestation, different type, but it took over our bushes, and we had, you know, we, we had to pay for that. It's your own personal maintenance.
Right. I was just looking for, how is it different, you know, compared to last year?
Well, education-wise, you are going to do something different, where if there's a hotspot, and we do have education pieces available, we were going to mail them to surrounding areas, warning them they were in a hotspot.
So, yes, in the past, under the past contract, just, we just started maybe two or three years ago, when we got the results from our contractor at the time that had areas of high counts, we sent letters to the adjacent surrounding property owners notifying them that they may want to engage the services of a professional to look at their property. Because again, the survey done by our previous contractor, as well as the survey proposed here, is looking at specific trees, not necessarily every tree in the subdivision. So we felt it was worthwhile, if we knew of areas from our previous contractor that they deemed needing some sort of additional treatment, we reached out to the adjoining properties via a letter, letting them know. We didn't blame anybody. We said, somebody in your area.
Yeah. So I had a question. So how much do we spend on the spring?
This year, we spent $2,000.
So we spent 20 on the survey and 2 on the spring?
Yes. But last, again, it's a survey. So our previous contract with National Gypsy Moth Management Group was $178,000. That included the survey, the final report, and they had two criteria for treatment. The majority of the treatment by them was applying a natural fungus at the base of a trees, at the base of the trees that had egg masses within a certain amount of, I don't remember the number, but within a certain amount. That was all part of that scope of work. And then any trees that the, that the survey or, that the National Gypsy Moth Management Group said were above a certain number of egg masses, they recommended ground-based spraying, which was a separate contract outside of what National Gypsy Moth Management Group provided. So in the past, we'd always pay separate for the recommended ground-based spraying.
So, so, because I, I remember the contract being at least $150,000. So basically, we're getting something similar for less than 20.
But much less treatment.
Much less treatment.
Much less treatment. And much smaller area, because the previous survey was over 500 plots on all different types of property. So we slimmed down the area of focus- 500 plots on all different types of property. So, we slimmed down the area of focus. And I believe the product that was used in the past for treating the bulk of the trees is a proprietary product by, owned by the contractor. Now, it would be whatever the recommendation is, using the ground-based spraying, which the product is referred to as BT. It has a scientific name. I can't pronounce it. But it's available to all different providers.
Right. So, whatever these guys come up with in terms of areas to spray, if I heard you correctly, their affiliate would be the one we would hire to do the spraying, right?
That's who we've used in the past.
Okay. But if we're talking, so we're not talking about, they're going to come back and suggest $200,000 for the spraying?
Certainly hope not.
Okay.
And if so, we need it.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, you know, I mean, I'm just concerned that...
Well, I think at that point...
That you're hiring somebody to tell you what you need, and then they're the ones that get hired. You mean, so you've just got to be careful.
Fair enough. Yeah, fair enough. But again, at that point, then, which I know the board is against, you know, then it comes under consideration, do we really have an infestation where we need to look at aerial spraying? And then, at that time, you are talking several hundred thousand dollars, hopefully utilizing funds from Oakland County. You know, it's a, it's kind of a weird place we're in, because we have very little treatment, so we don't get a lot of grant fund reimbursement, which is a good thing, that we don't need the treatment.
Yes. Some of those townships that were reaching out to Oakland County wanted aerial spraying of their whole area. And of course, we're in this area not as fond of the aerial sprays, so that limited us.
Yep. Olivia, so is the expectation that by doing a survey on township property and medians, telegraph, Woodward, et cetera, that that's going to give an accurate sample that can be extrapolated to private property?
I think the township is too large to say it's a good representation of what the township at large would be. But hopefully, through the education aspect and sharing that information. There is, I believe, part of Oakland County's system, and it's been a while, I mean, it's been a couple of months, but I believe part of Oakland County's program included a reporting phone number for residents to reach out to and report areas, or if they had spongy moth on it. And there was going to be some sort of correlation of the data on behalf of, by Oakland County. But again, our properties, you know, in the proposal, we included, you know, even the medians that we have planted trees on, that the township has made an effort to plant trees on in the medians. We've had cases where we've had to spray the medians with, for spongy moth, and they were pine trees. So, I know, you know, there is a tree that it likes, but we had a significant infestation on medians at the north end of Woodward on pine trees. And we've had residents call in about, you know, the moths being on other types of trees outside of their typical preference.
So, I'll just basically, basically, my thoughts on this, this has obviously been a problem for a long time in the township. I don't know if it's ever going to go away. I think the most important thing for us to do is educate the community. So, like, even when we're talking about so few communities are interested in participating, I tend to think that's probably because they don't realize what sort of problem it is. And I think Treasurer Keeps has talked about in the past, if we're remediating, but then no one else is, it's sort of, you know, wasted money, because we're just going to get the infestation coming from our neighbors. So, if everybody knows about it in the county, and then people are responsible for their own property, they can keep an eye out. They'll know. They'll see it quicker than the township, the survey, and then the cost is going to be on the homeowner anyway, to take care of their own property. And then, obviously, if we do find it on township property, we would want to care for it as well, so that we're good neighbors and not spreading it to other people. So, I think we have to, in the past, we would send it exclusively to the hotspots. I think it has to be something, at least, you know, we control our communication with our township, right? We can't do, we can't control what other communities in the township do. But at least if everybody in Bloomfield Township knows, this is something that we have, something to look out for, I think that that can go a lot further than even just treating these small spots, because it's just going to keep spreading.
And that would be the hope with the educational brochure, that that's something that could be included in the E-news or other resources that we have, where it would go out to the general public versus the, you know, specific letters that we would send. Because when trees were selected for ground-based spraying, we obviously sent a letter to the property owner saying, "Hey, just so you know, this is going to happen." But then I was like, "Wait a minute. We should notify the people in that..."
Yeah.
"...you know, adjacent to them."
Yeah. And I think you're spot on, like, something like the E-news, and maybe even repeatedly doing it, because some people don't catch an E-news. Maybe they're just looking at it, you know, once every couple of months. And then, that way, they can be alerted to the fact that this is a growing problem, and we need everybody's help to try to get it under control.
We were hoping to put it in the newsletter, too, because we know that goes to every single household, and it's already something we're mailing out.
Right.
So, that's why we're hoping that, you know, now we have Carrie, so she might be able to create something for us before Carrie. We didn't have anyone. But if the county were to, it's kind of nice to have that uniform message, too.
Yeah.
And if each group is telling their own communities their own thing, versus us in the county as a whole attacking it.
I actually, I like the suggestion, if we get something from MSU Extension, I'm sure that they have, I mean, I know that they do, because I've even attended programs that they put on about gypsy moth. Just take that and then sort of use the same thing. I mean, they're the authority, I would say, on that.
So, they, we have asked MSU Extension if they have, they have tons of information on their website. And we can send links, you know, no problem. But we asked if they had something concise, like a single-page brochure or a flyer, and they didn't at the time when we asked a couple of months ago. So, that's why we wanted to include in this, making that nice one-page document, you know, to send somebody 12 different links or five different links. But there is a lot of information regarding this on the MSU Extension.
I guess, you know, there's a lot of nuances to this spongy moth, as we've kind of learned over the years. And it is, it doesn't, pardon the fun, fly in a straight line. It's a function of cyclicality. It's a function of the rain. It's a function of the wind blowing, and all kinds of things. So, you know, and we had a longstanding relationship with one entity. And I would hope that, you know, we, and we've had actually one, I guess, with Davy, in terms of treatment, not necessarily in terms of surveying. So, I would just suggest, if we're ready to make a motion, I will. But I guess I would suggest that we also ask them if this is the, in terms of the time of year, what is the best, most efficient way to do surveying and really deal with this in a all-encompassing way? Because at this point, you know, we've approached them with, "We need a survey right now." And I'm just wondering if maybe there are better ways, or different times of the year, that we could be surveying, and maybe it might be more effective, maybe not, but...
So, I do know that fall is the best time, because you count the egg masses, and that's when the moths lay them. But in the proposal, they do refer to different alternatives to doing a survey. And it, you know, it includes, we've, fortunately, to my recollection, haven't been in the position where we had significant or notable defoliation. But it does include during surveys in the summer to look at defoliation versus counting egg masses in the fall. So, they do recommend considering or discussing other alternatives for a future program. But again, they did respond to what we had asked for, and what we asked for, what we were familiar with and what we knew about. But they do bring up the other alternatives of doing a defoliation survey, looking at other areas or other trends, more of a holistic approach, instead of going to the same 25 locations, more looking at, oh, is there defoliation? And so, I think it's, you know, certainly getting somebody on board who's knowledgeable would require some sort of contract or agreement. But I think it would, I think as part of, if the board approves this contract, this scope of work, this may evolve into something different for future years.
Good.
Just one last thing. I agree with most of what everyone else said, so I'm not going to repeat it. But, you know, I actually read their entire, what is it, 32, 25-page proposal. It's really a very thorough document. I was quite impressed by the time they spent in preparing this and responding directly to the RFP materials that we sent out, and the concerns that had been identified in prior conversations, which normally, I'm concerned, we only get one RFP response. But, I mean, this was a really great piece of work. They spent a lot of time on it. And so, I think it's a good idea. It's also a one-year agreement, so we've got flexibility to adjust it, including with the additional ideas they have for surveys. And on Page 18, they do go through and separately call out that the costs associated with each of these phases. And of the $19,000, all but 2,100 of it is associated with the survey cost, which maybe the county could pay for. We have this separate delineation here. And the informational brochure is only 2,100. You know, so I like the idea of having something that's tailored to our community and written in a way to be quickly absorbed, because as we recall from prior conversations, the MSU material and other materials were just so general, it just didn't, it wasn't really that helpful. So, it looks like a good idea to me.
Yeah. And I would, you know, hearing today about the county, you know, continuing to look at possible alternatives with the funding program that they have, that is something that if there were to be an opportunity to get reimbursement for part of this, then we would make sure that we were able to delineate that in the billing from the contractor, that we can, you know, if the program were to evolve with the county and something not be included on here, you know, we'd make sure they could separate it, so that we can easily identify it in a request for reimbursement. But I guess my only question is for Commissioner Gershenson, is this scope of work here would be completed by January. And if there is to be changes to the program that are approved by the county commissioners, would that take place this, this January? Just because we want, you know, this focused on this, on the survey. That's great news.
And then, since you spearheaded this, would you like to make the motion?
I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the motion as proposed by Olivia, and subject to review by our attorney.
Motion by Treasurer Keeps?
No support, and certainly even more so due to Commissioner Gershenson's presentation and the opportunities that we may have for reimbursement, both for survey costs and educational costs. So, thank you.
Support by Trustee Burnett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Thank you, Commissioner Gershenson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have to consider approval of amended Bloomfield Township Credit Card Use Policy Resolution. And we have Jason Tice.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Still not used to seeing Olivia with the short hair.
I know.
Where's it at?
It's been a while.
The credit card policy, would you... No, we don't, I don't think we need that one on screen, do we? The red line, so...
It was in the packet.
That one, there's a red line version in your packet. It's been about 11 years since we updated the credit card use policy. So, that's kind of one reason it's being done. And the other reason is, we've been looking at, actually, we're in the back end of a process of changing over our vendor that we use for credit cards. And with that, we'll gain some efficiencies. And so, looking back at how, looking forward how that will work compared to what's currently being implemented, some changes needed to be made, just to make sure that we stay in compliance as we transition to the new credit card. So, I'll take any questions, if there are any, on any of those changes.
Any questions for Jason? If not, I'd look for a motion.
I'll support that and just say that I've worked with Jason and our new vendor for credit cards. And I think the system's going to be much more efficient and easier for, to be able to process. So, I support the motion.
Motion by Trustee Burnett. Support by Treasurer Keeps. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. You guys are fast on the motions today. All right. Next, we have the introduction of the digital budget book. I am personally excited about this, because Mike Long, if you remember, when we started in 2016, we spent hours together trying to figure out the Excel sheet. So, I like that it's a little, little easier to take in from the community aspect.
So, I won't go through, there's a lot of information here and a lot of different pages. And I hope some of you were able to explore it prior to the meeting. And I don't know when it will be live on our website. I'm working with that department to figure that out, hopefully sometime this week. And if you like, I can let you know when that is, when we find out. So, ClearGov is the platform we're using. And we've uploaded all of the current year, '22, '23 adopted numbers into this book to make sure it all works correctly. And then, we'll use this going forward, starting this next March, as we finalize the next year's budget. So, they call it a digital budget book. It'll be a link on our website that takes them right to this page that you're seeing here. Starts off with various menus, dropdown menus across the top. And I just want to point out this blue arrow, because there's, not all the menus would fit. So, that's to scroll across. And then underneath each one, there's various dropdowns. The introduction pretty much shouldn't change year over year. We talk about, there's a transmittal letter that kind of gives a summary of what the various dropdowns are. There's a summary of the budget process, which then also gives this illustrative timeline, so people can see kind of when we start, when we get a preliminary, and what kind of takes place over that seven or eight-month period of time. We get into some accounting and fund structure, basis of budgeting. We're able to upload the recently adopted budget policy document right inside this, the organization-wide chart. And then, what's kind of neat is, I don't have to do anything with this page. They update this automatically. You can see their data source, where they're pulling the information from. And it does have our most recent census population, daytime population, the age groups, number of households, and by, you know, family, married, single, and so forth. So, some interesting information right at everyone's fingertips here. Then you get into budget overview. So, these are two pages that I've done manually, you know, with Word and Excel, that now is a little bit easier. The, basically, the highlights of the revenues for the year and the highlights of the expenditures. And then, in one spot, we can see the major personnel changes. So, maybe there's new positions or positions that are going to be filled will be highlighted here each year. Fund summaries, let's go public safety. So, fund summaries are the funds themselves, but at a higher level, without kind of getting into the line item detail. Each one, each page, each fund is set up the same way. You'll get a brief description of what the fund's purpose is. And then, it'll start summarizing the last few years of information into charts. Then summarize revenue breakdown by major category. Obviously, with public safety, the major source is property taxes. Then, you can compare prior-year actuals to the current-year budgets by category here. And then, for somebody who still kind of likes to see the data tables, you get that in the next section. Expenditures by expense type in a nice visual bar chart, and then, again, the data table that is feeding those. We're required to also show fund balance, so you get the last few years of fund balance. And so, that's kind of the format for all of the various funds that you're used to seeing. Funding sources, we created some pages for the major funding sources, not all of them. So, we did, we separated one, actually, property taxes into two. I think it's important for people to understand operating millages versus the debt millages. And the operating millages are what count towards our 10-mill township cap. So, in one spot, you can see the total collected, so you don't have to go to the various funds and add them up, if this was something you're interested in knowing. And then, the change from the prior year. Then, it's going to break it down by fund. So, out of all the property taxes being collected, public safety is getting the highest amount of 62%, the general fund, and so forth. Then again, the data table by fund. And then I added a table of all the operating millages. We've seen this similar spreadsheet in some of the other documents. Interfund transfers is important. So we discussed kind of the four different kinds of interfund transfers that the township has. And then summarized all of the ins and outs by category. So operating, central service, debt service, and then the most recent one added in capital transfers. Departments is where you'd want to go if you really want to dive in on a departmental basis and see more of the line item activity. Since Noah's here, I'll pick on his page. So with every department, you'll have a picture and title of the director of that department or departments, a summary. And then again, similar to the other pages, the total altogether compared to the prior year. Not everyone's will look like his because he's got multiple departments. So accounting would be very, more simpler than this because it's just accounting, whereas Public Works has motor pool, buildings and grounds, roads. And so that's what this is doing, is putting all of those into one umbrella. So here you can see by function, road, motor pool, buildings and grounds, same thing. And then you can start to see it separated. So Public Works is the area, and then buildings and grounds, every line item within it totals them, moves on to motor pool, and so forth. Then with all of these, you can start to break down expenditures by type. So you get an idea of where those dollars are being spent by category. So these are the major categories. Then you start seeing them grouped together. So you've got buildings and grounds, motor pool, and roads, salaries and wages grouped together and totaled. Again, his is large because of the multiple divisions. And then at the bottom of each department will be an organization chart showing the flow of where the people are and their titles. Long-term liabilities. Having, there we go. Our DB pension plan, funding history, so total liability versus total assets. And then similarly, OPEB. I like this one better. You can see the green is the liability coming down, and then our assets growing. So obviously, that funding percentage is, is getting better as those two are starting to get closer together. It's very...
That's annoying that does that.
Touchy.
Yeah. I haven't had that issue at my, my desktop, so it must be a laptop issue.
It's the mouse, yeah.
Debt, this is our total outstanding debt for that fiscal year, which if you were to not issue any new debt, then we would continually see a decrease year over year. I really like this because then you can start to see what is, what is the major contributor to that. It's still the pension obligation bonds. That was a very large issue. So year over year, these will, these will each start to come down. Road specialty, this one will probably increase. I mean, we're, we keep issuing new SADs on the roads, but these other ones will keep decreasing. And then a summary of each one of those types of debts, including at the end of each summary, highlighting when they will be paid off. So you'll find a lot of them are 2032. Your campus bonds, the POBs, library bonds were, were close, May of '24, that'll be done. And the roads, SADs are all over the place because those have come in, as you see, started in 2013 was the first set, and the most recent one in 2021. And then we have some county drain bonds. Capital leases were some, for some fire truck purchases, that's going to fall off as we move forward. Those have been paid. Then lastly, capital improvements. We've tried using Excel sheets and other things, and it's, it's a lot of work. So we're transitioning to see how this works, if we have it all housed within this platform. So we have a one-year plan, meaning what was included in the current year's budget. Gives you the total dollar amount and number of projects. And then this chart here feeding off of the table, showing you how that broke down. And so that Public Works, 600,000, that was that stormwater we had to add in. That was the largest piece that year. And then summarizes it by department requests or fund requests. So in one spot, instead of having to kind of feed through each fund or each department separately, if all you're interested in is what are our capital purchases and projects, you can come right here and they'll all be itemized. Then you can go the multi-year. So these, this will include what's in the one year plus the next four years, which obviously the furthest you go out, the more we're estimating, and we'll keep having to roll these forward and increase costs, of course, with inflation and other reasons. And we may have to move something that we anticipated originally would be in '24, '25, might now get moved to '26, '27, and forth, so forth. So over that five-year plan, they totaled almost $9 million in 60 different items or projects. And then breaks it down across each one of those years. And as you hover, you can see what are the big pieces in, I mean, fire, you can pick on them, but, I mean, their trucks, the rescue trucks, their ladder trucks, the sorb, it's all very expensive equipment, so. The last thing I want to show is this print button. So anyone who's finding that this is not their cup of tea to go through all these different menus and they still want that, something to view, whether it's a PDF or a printed version, click on print, put in your email address. If you want the whole document, you just select all, and it'll check all the boxes of every page. Create. And when I've done this, it only took about 10 minutes for a link to be sent to me to go get a 300-some-page document. So it's pretty quick. And 392 pages. So this is the, this is the PDF that I got downloaded when I went and did that link, just to kind of give you an idea of how it looks when it's in a paper slash PDF format. And it creates the table contents, and they're all linked. So you can come here and go personnel changes, and you're right at that page if that's what you wanted. That's it.
Any questions?
Thank you for sending it over the weekend, first of all, to get a sample of what it's like. And it's very user-friendly. Just, it's easy to use, provides a lot of information, it's much easier to obtain. And comparisons are just, again, I think just the most important thing to the residents is, will be how user-friendly it is and how easy it is to obtain the information. So it's a great platform.
Great.
One quick question, if we amend the budget during the year, does this change?
That's a good question. I'm sure that has, that has to have come up with other communities. They have multiple communities in the state and, and the nation. They're, they're a very fast-growing company as well. I'm the administrator, and all I have to do is send them new data, and they can have it uploaded within a matter of days, I'm told. So I don't see that being an issue.
When I looked at some other cities that used this, or some actual cities too, not just townships, I think I saw they had amended budget, you know, lines too, so.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
All right.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go on to the, consider the stormwater asset cleaning and television contract, televising contract.
All right, good evening. Got a few items in front of you. The first one we're talking about is the stormwater asset cleaning and televising. So with the large rains and significant rain events that we got during the summer of 2021, the township became aware of historic agreements and parcels, or chunks of parcels, easements that were dedicated to the township. They had to do with stormwater assets. When I say that, it's anything from pipes to open ditches to any number of types of conveyances, stormwater ponds, detention ponds, again, many different types of drainage systems. So how we wanted to attack those systems, the care, ongoing and future care of those systems, was to create an asset management plan for them, much like we have for our sanitary sewer and water assets. And basically, the first step in that process is to clean and televise the pipes so we know what their original condition is. And then our engineers will take that data and then make recommendations back to us if any improvements are required, or there are any defects they find within the system. When these came into us during the summer of 2021, we did send staff out to do just an emergency check to make sure that like debris hadn't plugged the inlet of a pipe or something of that nature. In, in all the cases, there was no debris. It was just that the, you know, the capacity of the system was overachieved by the storms that we got. So we didn't leave any emergencies hanging out there, but this is to guide our ongoing future maintenance of these assets. And, you know, they, they vary widely in the reasons on why the township took them over. They were all, everybody's in the ground right now that signed the agreements, so there's no firsthand knowledge of why. But typically, it was to facilitate development within the township, or to solve a problem, a drainage problem for somebody or a group of residents at one time. And this was when development was booming within the township, so that was more of a, you know, budgetary constraints weren't there to, to kind of limit those things. Then over the years, we became, we, we lost that institutional knowledge again to retirement or attrition. And so now we've become aware, when we had these exacerbating events, of these assets. And now we have a duty to understand that we own them and maintain them. You know, once a pipe's in the ground, people tend to forget about it, and that's when you have issues that make the news. So, so this is our first step in cleaning. To get an accurate picture of the pipe, they have to clean it. We'd like them to be cleaned anyway, that way we got a baseline. And then that information will be used to formulate a ongoing maintenance and repair program, you know, going forward. So my recommendation is, is this contract be approved to start that process. I have budgets within the general fund for it, for this work. And it's not going away because I'm, you know, certain that there will be care necessary in the long term for these projects. So this is an investment that we're going to have to continue to make.
Any questions for Noah?
I guess I would just make an overall comment, and Noah and I have talked about this, is that this $249,707.75, I think is just going to be the beginning of dealing with our stormwater issues. And I think last year was clearly an eye-opener and a learning experience in terms of things that, you know, we, we do need to maintain and that we own. And clearly, when they're cleaning, maybe that'll help some of the situation that occurred. Clearly, when they're cammering, I would imagine it's hard to believe that we're not going to find items, if not lots of items. It's, it's kind of hard to, when you think about something going in the ground for maybe 30, 40, 50 years, if it hasn't been maintained, even if it has been maintained, there's going to be issues. If it hasn't been maintained or looked at, you know, it's likely that there's going to be more issues. So I think this is going to be the beginning of this story, and I'm glad that we're dealing with it because it's, it's important and we have to, so.
Yeah, and, you know, whether you believe in global warming or climate shift, that's really not the point. The point is we're seeing more extreme rain events, and that is a fact. So the, you know, these systems must be cared for, you know, and to eliminate the liability at the very least.
Well, and along those lines, just the fact that we know that we have, that we own them now.
Yep.
It's giving us that opportunity, if nothing else.
A lot of the laws for the sanitary sewer system are based on knowledge of the system and knowledge of defects. And once we become aware, we have a duty, you know. And intrinsically, we feel as staff, we have a duty in these cases, you know.
Yeah. This is just to check infrastructure that belongs to the township.
Correct.
Okay. So if there's county infrastructure or private infrastructure, this would not include that.
Correct.
What percentage of our stormwater overall infrastructure is ours versus county and private?
Minimal. You know, these are about 50 sites, and there's thousands of sites within the township, and thousands of either private or county drainage systems. The lion's share of the drainage systems within the township are private systems. Even the county really only comes into play in very specific instances.
So you said this is for roughly 500 sites?
50.
This is for 50 sites?
Yeah. And there's thousands out there.
Okay. That seems like pretty expensive per site.
Well, but there's, some of them include thousands of feet, linear feet of pipe. So even though it's one site, and you know, like Maxwell Court, for instance, there's an underground storage tank there. So that's a different animal. But yeah, one of the sections is a couple thousand feet, linear feet of pipe. So overall, I believe it's within the spec in there, there's, oh, they don't have the, the linear feet is listed under quantity. They don't have it totaled up at the bottom, but you can see there's significant numbers in there. I think one's 8,000 linear feet. And each one of these was a source of flooding last year. I mean, that's the way we became aware of them, was the water entered a home.
And if we don't take care of the infrastructure that we're aware of, that we own, that's when we're going to have problems. It's moving liability, of course, but then the residents are going to have the problems. So we certainly have a responsibility and duty to train those and certainly to find out what the problems are and...
Yeah, and sure, and again, if we have rains that are greater than the design capacity of the pipe, they will be, there will be flooding. You know, our duty is to make sure that this pipe functions as designed. Now, the engineers designed it to fit the criteria at the time, which is usually a 10-year event. But, so that's the emphasis here, is making sure it's functioning to the, it's absolute optimal function, so.
This is similar to what we do in our sanitary sewer as well, which I know some people say, don't go looking for problems, but when you can find them earlier and you can line them versus a full-on repair, although $250,000 almost sounds, and it is exorbitant, one failure was, what's, 850,000?
We had a million dollars worth of work that came up from last year. So, and the tank itself is probably a half a million dollar worth of work that has to go into that tank, you know.
Are you talking sewer now, sanitary sewer?
No, we're talking stormwater. It's a stormwater tank.
One of these stormwater failures, that storage tank that we didn't know about, and we didn't know the system, it is almost a million dollars. So by now, by doing this, like we do on our sanitary, we can find if there's issues. And hopefully, you know, these early repairs are a lot less expensive to us.
Sure. And they'll likely recommend, okay, go in in five years or 10 years, depending on conditions, you know, and reassess in those areas. So this plan will just give us the overall battle plan going forward.
So we're covering all the sites that we know about?
Correct.
Okay. Is this an annual thing?
No, it'll likely be a one-time plan, but we are discovering new stuff as, it's been a dry year, but we've discovered even since we signed the contract to do the asset management plan, we found three or four more assets out there. It's all pretty organic, how it comes up. We might get a complaint, then we start looking at easements for the property. You know, you can generally tell, like a homeowner installed stormwater system versus one the township was involved with, where we put in cement pipe versus them doing a lot of plastic pipe and that type of stuff. So we have to investigate them at that point. We've... We've, before, at the beginning of last year, it would have been, no, we don't own anything, right? Because that was the thought at the time. When we became aware of these, we had to change that mantra and start to really dig in before we, you know, use that type of language with people.
Right. And I think it's important, one of the things that you said was that this is coming out of general fund money. This is not water and sewer money.
Painstakingly, yes.
Pipes under the ground that carry water, it's not water and sewer.
Correct.
This is general fund, general fund money. We have it. This was in our budget.
Correct. Yep. And that's a great note, because I was in a position last summer where I had to utilize road staff and water staff to respond to these emergencies. As the ball started to get bigger, the snowball, we knew that that was not a prudent way to do it. And a longer, long-term plan had to bring in general fund money and eliminate that water and sewer money. Now, a lot of these assets are tied with a roadway or tied with other infrastructure that we might have. So, you know, the first blush is sending, like, our road foreman out to make sure there's not an emergency situation. I can justify that. But once we start doing work, you know, that type of thing, then we need to have that separate funding source.
Yeah. And so that thing on Judy Lane, that was, that was a county one, you thought?
Yep, yep. The failed pipe there, yep.
Okay.
So Noah, so you mentioned they're doing 50 sites, but there are thousands of them. Are these all that we didn't, we were not aware of, or that's just all of the scope, some of which we were not aware of?
It's the ones that we became aware of through last year. Again, we're becoming aware of more, not every day, but every month or so. You know, anytime we get a significant rain, we start to get questions like this. The, most of these are not ours, but, you know, we, it begs us to take a look at them when, and there are legal, we're going by legal documents here. They're not, you know, any handshake agreements or anything. These are actually easements that were dedicated to the township for ownership and operation. You know, so they're solid legal footing on that.
Well, and I think it's much better to be proactive than reactive, because unfortunately, you may find some things that we need to address, but rather than wait till there's a failure and somebody gets flooded again, and then we have an emergency and a much higher cost, so.
Yeah, and there's an expectation out there, because a couple people, residences, were flooded multiple times last year. And we didn't know, mantra doesn't work when it's the second or third time, you know what I mean? And so you can only be unaware of stuff once, and then the liability grows after that, you know.
Can I, sort of on that note, I want to briefly mention that, you know, when these were coming up, Supervisor Walsh, you know, came to me and we, in the clerk's office, we helped on this a little bit with looking at board minutes, you know, when the PUDs were approved or the Platts were approved. The board approved the township, assuming ownership and liability to maintain these systems, you know. And so the documentary evidence is all there, as you mentioned. Many times, it's right in the minutes. It's another recorded device, recorded element at the county as well.
Right.
So it is what it is, and we have an obligation to, you know, to maintain it. We, worst-case scenario, obviously, we don't, is that this number will pale in comparison to the potential home damage and disruption that the residents would see to the infrastructure that we actually, you know, own.
Right.
The other issue?
Quickly, I want to mention was that this is a unit price contract, right?
Yes.
So when the work actually starts, there's a possibility that the number of units that were estimated would change, and they need more, right?
No, we are aware of the finite, we had the, our engineering firm prior to going out do a baseline survey. So we shouldn't, it's not going to be like a water main project where we had to change something in the field. We're pretty much finite on the number of, on the linear feet of pipe that are out there. We've already had eyes on it and measured.
249, we don't need in our motion to add that.
Correct. And I personally, since we are adding all the time these things on, if there's something we discover in the field, I'll put that on the next year. We made a conscious decision that we can't keep moving the goalposts on our engineers and just giving them one-offs every time we get them. So it's like, once a year, we're going to update that. Then we'll know what kind of bite we're biting off for next year, and we'll come back with a separate contract.
Excellent. Thank you.
Unless, I mean, if there's an emergency, I'll come to you and tell you and tell you here was how we're going to address the emergency with this company. But that would, you know, that could happen at any time. So I would come back separately if there's some real emergency.
Policy for emergencies, you know, the supervisor.
So you guys would hear about that, you know. I don't expect that, but.
Thank you.
And these are, you know that I have reached out to Martin, because he sees the hairs on the back of my neck whenever I find out it's a certain supervisor in the past. And it's always that, it was just booming too fast, and they weren't keeping up. They weren't as diligent in the record-keeping, maybe, or like you said, people leave. And it was, you know, 50, 60, 70s here were quick growth. And we didn't have the same maybe vision of how big it would get. They didn't have, they didn't have the restrictions, like you said, like we have now. But these are 50 and 60-year-old pipes. If they haven't failed, thank goodness, not as many have. But now that we know some are, we need to, we need to figure it out, because it can't be in great shape without having any maintenance whatsoever.
Right.
So this is very important.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's beyond critical. I have come to believe that any, you know, failure in government is really just attributed to a failure in planning. So I'm so thrilled that we are creating the stormwater asset management plan, and I really commend Supervisor Walsh and this administration, and of course, you and your department for really spearheading this, because, you know, we'll hear from residents if it fails, and we definitely don't want it to fail, so.
Right. I agree. We try to foster a proactive approach here, and that's from sanitary sewer to water main. I mean, we try to foster that through everything we do, so.
Any more questions for Noah? I look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the contract as presented.
Motion by Trustee Shostak.
Support.
Support by Trustee Barnett. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Thank you. Next is to consider the approval of the pollutant surcharge and industrial waste control, right? Yeah, control charge.
Yep. So these are pass-through charges that we get yearly updates from Great Lakes Water Authority, who is our ultimate water supplier through SAQWA. There's two charges kind of laid out within here. There's the industrial waste control charges, which are paid by every commercial industrial entity. There's about 400 in the township, paid by every entity, and that's related to the size of meter that serves their property. And that's loosely based on the regulatory requirements that Great Lakes Water Authority has to comply with at the state and federal level to serve water to those facilities. So it's the permitting for industrial waste and that type of stuff going downstream. And again, we have 400 entities within the township that are subject to those charges, and they're laid out on the third page there. The second portion of this is really anecdotal, because there's a class, Costco used to be in this class, but they are no longer in this class. But what they do is test the affluent, the wastewater coming out of the facility. They test it for the chemicals stated, such as BOD, biochemical oxygen demand. So that's the amount of oxygen that the organic matter within the water strips out when it's breaking down, right? And Great Lakes Water, if you pass a highly organic material onto them, it can do things to their treatment process, and they have to add more chemicals to that equation. So it's basically tests their affluent and says, if you're high in any of these waste products, we're going to charge you more, right? And so Costco, when they built, were part of that charge. When they got running and tested their affluent, they found that they were lower than the quantity, and they'd no longer have to pay that. But we still have to approve it through our billing in case, you know, next year, somebody gets in, tests their affluent, and now they're subject to these charges. So even though it doesn't impact us now, could impact us, another entity, if constructed or if opened. But that's the nexus of that charge, so.
Any questions?
I just have one comment that on the resolution, I think there's a typo. I believe it's milligrams per liter. Is that correct, Noah?
Yes.
Okay. So there's ones there instead of.
I see. Okay.
Sorry.
No problem. I'll correct that. Well, pending the outcome here, I'll correct.
Should we approve it the right way?
Correct.
Would you like to make the most?
I'll make a motion that we approve it, subject to that change.
Motion by Trustee Shostak.
Support.
Support by Trustee Ficki. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. The next will go on to consider the approval of collection of delinquent solid waste accounts.
Another, this one and its kind of sister agenda item on the next one is really dealing with delinquents within our trash service. So these are services that are rendered by GFL, and they, for whatever reason, the bill hasn't been paid. Through our, driven by our ordinance, after they're notified, which the letter for notifications in here, they have a certain amount of time to pay, and then we transfer that delinquent amount to the tax rolls. So that's by ordinance. It's a shell statement within the ordinance, so there's kind of no wiggle room on it. But the thought is this, you know, more so with the water and sewer side, but definitely with trash collection, it's a public health concern and a public safety concern. And so they don't want interruption in service for the residents and for the, you know, for the provider themselves. That creates hiccups. But it allows the service to remain in place and put this charge onto the tax rolls. It also means that we don't have to aggressively, like, have a collection service on behalf of the water department or the trash contract as well. So that's the way it's set up per our ordinance, very similar within the water and sewer department. That, I can cover it more in the water and sewer, but that's the preferred method from EGO and that, because they don't want you to turn off people's water, especially during the pandemic. They wanted to maintain water service for people, and we have, we have never shut off water for non-payment. We only shut off for, you know, cross-connection issues, safety-related items, so. So this, this resolution is for moving the delinquents for solid waste to the tax rolls.
Questions? I look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by Trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. So next, we'll go to consider approval of delinquent water and sewer accounts resolution.
Again, much like the trash, it's a public health and safety concern. The policy at the township, driven by the ordinance, is that we don't shut off for non-payment. So looking for approval of the resolution to send the delinquencies in water and sewer onto Oakland County to be placed on the tax rolls.
So moved. Moved by Treasurer Keeps. Support by Trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Next is to consider the tank brine system contract award.
Okay, so since I've been in management at the DPW, we've, and it's not my fault or my charge, but we've been moving to a system of using more liquids within the roadways, and really driven by recession '06, '07, and we saw very large increases in the cost of salt in Michigan and in the region, period. And so it's, it became a push to use liquids, because liquids are more effective. Even if you can just pre-wet the salt that's going down on the roadway, it begins to work faster, and it also doesn't scatter as far, because it's weighted down and it's right there on the roadway. To properly fight snow and ice, you need a brine solution. That's what typically Mother Nature would create by us dropping hard salt down on the road, mixing with the snow and ice that's on the roadway, and then creating that brine. If we can create a brine and either apply it directly to the roadway or pre-wet that salt, we get a much better effectiveness to the salt on the road, and we have to use way less. So you have environmental benefits to that, which is a major pusher here, because the state just came out with part of their stormwater permit. They're now looking at chlorides, and it's due to salting roadways. There were some studies done in Minnesota, starting and then kind of transitioning over to Michigan of urban lakes and the buildup of salt and a salt sink within the lakes. And basically, the lakes are becoming more acidic. It's due to the runoff from treatment of roadways. And once we reach a tipping point, then it's going to be tough for aquatic life to live within these lakes. So they're regulating chlorides in this way. We're already at the forefront, because we have controllers on our vehicles. This is the next step to both save us the money and also kind of react to these environmental concerns. So we're nowhere near that tipping point at this point, but the problem is, it's very difficult to get salt out of water once it's in solution. Ocean, think of the ocean, that stays suspended in that water unless you evaporate the water off. It's very difficult. You may know, it takes a lot of energy to remove the salt from water to be, do a desalinization plant. So it's not like you can just run the water through a wetland like you can with organic pollutants, and that wetland will filter it out. Once it's in the waterway, it's in there. So that's why it's a concern that if, you know, our local lakes here start to turn into salt brine, and then you have aquatic life suffering, you're going to have a major issue within the state. So that's why they're regulating it. That's why we're pushing forward both that and a budget concern to position ourselves to make our own brine in-house, so we don't have to buy it. We've already got the salt in the water. We have the raw materials. So we're kind of leveraging Farmington Hills and a couple other people that are at the forefront of salt brine. We're leveraging their experience, and we're getting a system. We went out and got the best from Minnesota. That's why we use their bid, their consortium bidding with it. They just, Michigan is behind as far as this goes. So there's not companies in Michigan that specialize as much in this stuff. So that's why we're reaching out and trying to get the best of the best, you know. So we have a system that's idiot-proof, that, you know, both from an environmental perspective and from an operator's perspective, there's not a lot of stuff they have to do when they come up to it. And we're going to set ourselves in place here to basically move into the 21st century or move, move to the next level as far as snow and ice control, so.
Any questions?
So it sounds like a move in the right direction, because my questions were specifically, it says, you know, more efficiencies. It's more efficient. You can put it down earlier. It doesn't run off. But the, and of course, the environment was my other issue, which you've already covered. But the question, only question I have is that it will save us money over time, because salt is more expensive. And I hate seeing those huge salt piles where it spits out too much.
Right.
But what is the, the short term versus the long term in terms of what we have to put in to, to get ourselves more online to make our own brine versus how much we'll save in the salt process?
Well, it's, percentage-wise, you save about, I mean, it costs us pennies a gallon versus it's about 15 cents a gallon if we want it supplied by another entity. So 15 times the savings at that point. Now, extrapolate that over the years of the life, the useful life of the product, we are going to make money, not make money, but save money, you know. And so I can't give you 100%, like, we'll be sitting on another $100,000, because, you know, that really has a lot to do with the type of winter we have. But it is a way, and it will be controlled by, you know, our, our controllers, our computer programs to put down the minimal. We can do some of the pre-wetting when we go forward as well, which will save on staff time eventually, because we can go out ahead of a storm. Plus, we don't get the situations where you have the bonding of the material to the pavement, which makes it harder to get off. And sometimes we can't, literally can't get it off. So, you know, the, the savings are from salt use, staff time, vehicles being crashed in poor weather. It's, but it's, I can't tell you it's going to be a million dollars. I think that's something that we need to evaluate going forward and track, you know, because as we get into the quantities. Another thing that kind of makes it more dynamic or muddies the waters more is we have to be able, we have to change the way our trucks are built. And I kind of mentioned that that's the first thing we did was make the capacity more to carry brine on the trucks, because right now, we're geared up to carry hard salt. So we have to literally take out space to put salt in, to put these tanks in. So we're about halfway through that process. So now it makes sense, because we can utilize the brine to get that system into place. And then over the next vehicle purchases, we have 14 in our fleet, seven are kind of retrofitted. As we go and keep buying more plow trucks, this is the way we're going to go. And our plow trucks are going to look a lot different than they do now, because we're going to be, you're going to see a lot of tank-type stuff. You're going to see live bottom, live bottoms, because we need to basically meter the salt out differently to put the chloride on it. So you're going to see kind of a modernization of the equipment. So, you know, if you think of those investments in the equipment, and it becomes, you know, pretty nebulous, but I will report back on that and what we could, and dollars and cents in salt use, we will see a difference, I guarantee.
That's, that's great. It sounds like a win-win. And, and I know Minnesota's probably a great model for us, because I know they get hammered a lot worse than we do for weather. And I appreciate you moving us in the right direction.
And this really started with Tom, you know, my predecessor. Luckily, he's, he had an open mind towards it, you know, and that allowed Dwayne Poole, who is, you know, our superstar foreman in the road department, to, you know, kind of start to design his, his view of how we're going to move forward. And view of how we're going to move forward. And in all likelihood, this isn't going to be completed when I'm even here. So this is going to be a progression that's going to, you know, we're at the start of it, but I don't know where the end is, you know?
Not allowed to leave. What are you talking about?
While we're talking 15, 20-year, you know what I mean?
Right.
The whole complexion could change before then, you know, so.
Neil.
Thanks. That was nice of you to mention Tom tries, because I remember when he did start that. But you've really taken it to another level, and I appreciate that. You've been very proactive. A lot of the surrounding communities are using brine, and it's, as you mentioned, it's very environmentally friendly, and much more so than salt. But most importantly, or as importantly, it's some budgetary savings to us. And I think the most important thing out of everything is to help keep the roads as safe as possible for our residents and the people who drive on our roads. So, I mean, it is a very positive approach that you're taking and proactive, as I mentioned, and keep moving the township, moving forward and doing positive things as opposed to, you know, as technology and efficiencies change. It's good that you're doing that because it helps everybody. So I applaud you for that.
So Noah, like in Farmington Hills, before a storm, were likely to see then kind of like combed fluid on the road, where you'll see three or four inches apart, and it just constantly.
Yeah, they're doing a lot of pre-wetting in Farmington Hills, and, you know, another point I'll make up, and I live in Farmington Hills, so I see the benefits of it, you know, and so I, and it is visible. You can see it on the roadway. I hear the predictions, right, for snow on Thursday or Thursday night, and I'm thinking, okay, overtime, we're going to have people in early Friday morning. But if it's a one-to-two-inch storm and we can do pre-wetting, we won't be out in those cases, you know? And so additionally, what we're seeing more in the last few years is not the quantity of snow, but it's these transitional storms that have ice associated with them, and it's a great asset for that type of a storm.
I, I think more than budgetary, I mean, that's going to be great, but really dealing with the snow in advance is going to be much safer. Well, it's not really even the snow, it's the ice. And it's, you know, when you see it, when, after the plows come through and there's that, because they can't get down that low, this will prevent it even from icing up initially so that when they go plowing off, it all comes off. So it's going to be great for safety.
With 12 drivers, it takes us 16 hours to get through the township, so it's definitely going to provide that buffer as well, you know, to maybe, you know, the areas that we're going to hit last, maybe hit them with the pre-wet ahead of time, then you do your conventional on the other areas to just, you know, give, hedge your bets in that case. You know, I'm still going to have to make the bet on whether we send them out on Thursday versus coming in on Friday, so I'm still going to have to make that call with my staff's help, you know? But it takes some of the pressure off.
You've done a great job, and I think this is going to help you get even further along the road.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I look for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by Treasurer Keeps. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. And still, Noah, consider water and sewer emergency generator contract award.
So this is a budgeted item. I think it came in a little bit over budget, but it's, well, what we're doing is modernizing our emergency generation. And when I say emergency generation, we're talking about redundant power. So we have multiple assets out there, pump stations, the Westborne Pumping Facility, that have backup power in them currently, but we have an old generator that is a redundant power. So if we lose a generator that's in place at a facility, we can wheel up the mobile generator and hook it into that facility and power it. The example I always use with redundant power was a July power outage over here at our DPW building, and the generator started on fire. So we lost power generation at the DPW facility, and at that time, we didn't have redundant hookups on the outside of the building. So we made it a priority at that time to protect our operations, to do redundant power at those facilities. What you have to understand about these facilities is that some of them operate at like 208 volts, some of them operate at 400 volts, some of them operate in single-phase, double-phase, triple-phase power. So we needed a generator that was smart enough to, in the past, what we had to do was basically rewire the generator when we took it to each different site. And so this happened in the field by the foreman at the time, and basically, they had to rewire the generator and have the knowledge to do that, then also correct it after the fact and rewire it back to the way it should be. This created issues, and so what we did, decided to basically get rid of the old generators with the older, and they're 15, 20 years old at this point, so it's time for that. And when I say get rid of them, we're going to sell them. But the new generator has a modern switchgear that allows us just to turn a dial and go to the, you know, between the different voltages or the different phases that we need out there. So it's, not only does it replace the two older generators that we have now, it also is going to modernize it to take some of that guesswork out of it. And we did have an incident where the generator was left rewired and then hooked into another facility, and it could have been very bad. There, basically, the connectors exploded, but it didn't, and this was years ago with the, under the old water foreman, but it didn't, you know, this will create a safety margin for those type of things as well. And we'll be able to take the same generator, instead of kind of flip-flopping, doing the rewiring, we'll be able to take the same generator to multiple locations, so. In all likelihood, depending on the emergency, it'd probably support our generator that we have for building maintenance in here, which is there in case we need that redundant power as well, so.
Any questions? If not, I look for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Shostak.
Support.
Support by Trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. One more, Noah, right?
Yep.
Consider approval of.
Good one. We'll get a grant on this one.
Oakland County Critical Infrastructure Grant.
So this, it's ARPA-related. The county got a significant allocate, or the county board created a significant allocation to support communities and their infrastructure improvements. And this is all, again, through ARPA. The way they crafted their program, they were looking for water and sewer assets to be looked at. We already, so we basically capitalized on a budget item, that, two budget items that we already had in place. The first is Olivia's saw work that she's doing. Through that saw work, you know, we found a couple sanitary sewer issues, but this will offset the, some of the costs of some of that view, videoing and televising of the sewers. The second angle of it is, is to help us with, we have a state order, well, everybody's under an order through the Clean Water Act to look at lead service lines going into the homes. We allocated almost $400,000 to complete that task. Even though we really don't have a lead problem here in Bloomfield Township due to the ages of the homes and being proactive, we still have to comply with the state regulations, which say that we have to randomly sample our service lines within the township to determine if they're lead or not. Basically, what it's going to do is check our records. We have pretty good records here at Bloomfield Township for service line material, but what the state wants is assurance that your records were good, done through a random check. So this funding will not only offset the sewer televising that we're doing out there through the saw grant, it also offsets some of that money within my lead copper program at the township. So what I'm asking for is the ability for me to sign the grant agreement and execute the paperwork forward to Oakland County. It'll then go to their board. Again, we've already budgeted for, and these two projects are already going, so I would probably just apply it and get the reimbursement right away, so I don't have it hanging out over there, so.
Any questions?
I just had a quick question. Under paragraph 2F, the subaward period of performance start and end date, the start date is listed at September 1, 2022, and the end date is April 1, 2022. Should that be 23?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was something I put in there, so that's my mistake. I was just basically trying to line it up with our fiscal year, because that's when I had it budgeted, but certainly I will amend that prior to submitting the agreement.
Do you want to speak to, in case there are questions also? Oh, wait, first, can we finish this one? Because we haven't, okay. Sorry. Are there any questions on this one? If not, I look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by Trustee Shostak. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And then there is, as you saw in the packet, there was the monthly update for Long Lake. Do you want to, in Olivia's place, give a little bit of that that's in there?
Yeah, so we're definitely, they've got all this stuff together. We've got our preliminary approval for the permit, or for the detour, which you probably saw the signs up on Telegraph Road, and then they were kind of uncovered, and we were like, whoa, 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 you need to cover those up, because we started getting calls, you know, and we were nowhere near starting. So it's scheduled to start like the Tuesday after Labor Day. They, the contractor has everything. What we need to do is notify the road commission that the closure will actually go forward three weeks ahead of it. I believe that's going on like right now, and then their board finally approves the actual closure. We're hearing anecdotally that they're going to be able to get in and get out of there quicker than we estimated, though we're not, you know, cashing that check at this point. But there could be some relief that they could get in there and get out of there quicker than we thought. But at this point, it's two to three months that that road's going to be closed down. This is kind of, the issues over there are exacerbated. There's a leak for Consumers Energy over there as well that they discovered at Middlebelt and Long Lake Road. So the road commission's concerned about having both of those projects going at once, but we've impressed upon them that the criticality of this project. And so we're going to go forward. I mean, they can legally keep us from going forward, but we, we have told them that, you know, we, if both of these are going on at the same time, that's because they're emergencies, you know? So things are progressing forward. A letter just went out to the residents impacted in that area. Again, you know, there's manholes and stuff sitting out there right now. So materials are arriving. The pipe, which is the, which was the main thing they were waiting on, the cast iron pipe for water main and the, and the other pipe that was, we're waiting on for the project, they have procured that at this point. So it's starting to come together. We wanted to originally have the project done before school started, so that shows you how the economy and supplies have kind of delayed this thing, so.
And speaking of schools, I connected Cory in our engineering department with the schools, with not just the superintendent, but the communication. So they'll be sending out our information that we send to residents in the area, to all of the parents and the students. And we also contacted the transportation bus group so that they're aware, so they've already kind of pre-routed some of their schedules, so.
Yeah, we'll be working. We know it's a big impact with them sighted right here, you know, and there's not a lot of easy, good options for getting around this site. So we, that's the biggest thing here. I mean, the construction project's pretty straight, there's a lot of conflicts, but it's pretty straightforward. The impacts to the residents is going to be the biggest thing to kind of mitigate, so. And I've been in touch myself with a couple of the people that are kind of homeowners reps and people in the neighborhood that everybody just comes and talks to. I know the clerks and a couple other departments have been in touch with these same people as well. So we're, we're really trying to, I put out three letters, you know, prior to even, because once I closed the road down and made that decision, I had people calling, and then once nothing moves forward, they obviously want to know why, you know? And most people can't tell that we're dealing with a swamp, a transmission main, DTE high-tension cables, and all this stuff within that area. You can't tell that from the ground surface, so, you know, that's, that creates some angst too, so.
Thank you for the update.
Yep.
Yeah, I saw the signs go up on Franklin. I traveled that way. This is a go-to route for me for so many things. And I saw the signs. I was like, oh, no, is it ta, oh, no, they put the, they put plastic bags, so.
Yeah, that's interesting, too.
But I thought it's, so I knew it was coming soon.
Yep, and we'll be glad when it's over. It will be something. We'll be doing, I'll be out on site doing a couple like updates straight from the site, because it will be something cool to look at, you know? It's going to be our biggest project that I've been involved with here at the township, but we're finding these things more and more. We do have aging infrastructure, so you'll, when we have our study sessions about the ARPA funding here in the township, you'll see what we're seeing coming down the road from, and when I say we're, it's Olivia, myself, Katie, the management of water, sewer and engineering, see the ball rolling down at us, and so you'll get an idea of that as well.
As soon as they heard there was an ARPA study session, it would be a long one, I'm guessing, because you've got a lot of things coming at you that night. But thanks for stepping in and talking about that.
No problem.
Thank you, Noah.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is to approve payroll and vouchers for August 22nd. Unless there are any changes, I look for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Shostak.
Support.
Support by Trustee Fekki. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the last one is motion to adjourn.
I move re-adjourn.
Motion by Clerk Brooks.
Support.
Support by Trustee Barnett. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll see you in two weeks.